Okay. By way of introduction, let me characterize what it is that we are doing tonight. We are reviewing two draft decisions for one in five concrete road. One for the three lot definitive subdivision and one for subjective action site plan approval, special permit. And what we are deciding or trying to decide, it seems to me if you boil it all down to its essence, is we are trying to decide if the public benefit that comes from this flexible subdivision outweighs the waivers that we must grant to make the subdivision feasible. So I think we need to review these two decisions in conjunction with each other. Because there are a couple of waivers that we think of as being fairly substantive. One of them being the offset waiver and the other one being the dead end waiver. So as we've been discussing for a long time now, we're considering those waivers very seriously. We want to make sure that what's in these documents reflects what the planning board's comfortable with enough to grant that relief from the planning board's rules and regulations, subdivision rules and regs. That's what we're doing. So we began with a couple of draft documents that Mark was kind enough to produce and that have subsequently been edited by two successive planners. The first one Susan Haber, the second one our new planner Betsy Ware. So what we're looking at here are the results of those efforts.
Okay, but then the one that you have before you is the one that was, I think, last modified by Mark.
After, and that was Betsy.
Yeah.
Which one is what? What do you mean last modified by Mark? When did that happen?
Thursday.
Thursday or Friday, and that was emailed out.
Yep.
Sue?
That's the one that we got yesterday?
Yeah.
Because I, for example, I see a waiver here that wasn't in the last version that I saw, but it's not highlighted either.
I would have just, here's what I did. I took Sue's base document and I accepted all changes, so I moved it out of there. And then I made the modifications that you see. I think the fundamental change that I made with regard to Sue's document is that she called upon Jim and Anne to do the infrastructure for lot three, but it's their intent to retail a lot three and have lot three's new owner doing infrastructure.
But that is in which decision?
I don't know what you're looking at.
But what you've just described is in which decision? The definitive decision. And then there's another issue, as I understand it, which has to do with surety, correct?
Yes.
And what is your position on the surety requirement?
Well, we would do the usual in the context of a subdivision, enter into Form D with you and Form E, which I view as redundant, but we'll do that too. Form D now says in your book that you won't let us sell a lot or get a building permit until the infrastructure is installed. Normally a subdivision would put eighty percent of the work in the ground and then convert from a covenant to a bond so that you have a money guarantee that the work would be finished. What we're proposing is that we won't sell, just as an example, lot three. I'm sorry, we won't get a building permit for lot three until that infrastructure's in the ground. But because the buyer of lot three is going to put in a common driveway infrastructure, they're not subdivision, they're just retailing this lot off. That's what we propose. I see that Joel Bard is addressing it in an email and didn't see it as prior. You still have security. The thinking is that the buyer of lot three, if you look at the plan, which you should be familiar with right now, lot three owns all the way from the house down to Conover. So that initial portion of it will be shared between the owner of lot three and the owner of lot two. We don't expect lot two to be built anytime soon. So when three puts in the pipes and the wires and the driveway, they will dry stub at the boundary of lot two. And that's to be negotiated in the purchase and sale agreement. It's obviously a premium that they're going to have to bear, but the buyer will take that on and will assure that that will happen. And you won't give him a building permit unless he does.
Well, I've got to come-
You won't be selling lot two before you sell lot three.
I can't imagine that that will do the-
But that's not a guarantee. Let me ask you this question. In every single one of these subdivision plans that we have done, and we've done a number of them, we've always, the subdivision has always installed subdivision road.
Yeah.
Every single time. We've been doing this now for something like fifteen years. In every single one of these flexible subdivisions, we've talked about, we've required surety for the construction of the roadway. Why should we make an exception in this case after fifteen years? Why is this a special case?
Well, they're not building a subdivision roadway, they're building a common driveway. That's one big distinction. This is really just a two lot shared driveway. There's, they're not going to, they're going to turn the job over to the person who's building the house up there.
But we don't have a negotiation with the person who's building the house.
You have a decision and until they build the driveway and the associated infrastructure to specification, they can't have a building permit. When they buy lot three, that's going to be very clear to them, where they're not going-
Wait a minute, that's, so the two are linked. But that's what bothers me, that I don't, I personally have, I don't personally have confidence that tying the performance exclusively for this, for site work exclusively to the issuance of a permit associated with the state building code is something that makes me comfortable. Because the two aren't, because if you're a builder, let's say, and you come in and you submit a set of documents that meets all of the requirements, the relevant requirements of the state building code, how would the building inspector be able to deny you a building permit?
One of the relevant requirements of the state building code is that you have to comply with all pertinent laws of the Commonwealth, and your decision here will be a pertinent law of the Commonwealth. Until they meet that standard that you've imposed, they can't have a building permit. There's no constructive grant of a building permit.
That makes me personally uncomfortable. I have, as an architect, it just does. I can see that that could create a problem down the road. But the thing is, your two exceptions are linked together. You've got to have them both. You can't have one without the other. And I'm troubled by the lack of surety, by hanging everything on the building inspector on the third floor, holding back the building permit until everybody's, until the planning board is satisfied that all the site requirements and conditions have been met. That bothers me a lot.
Well, they've got to find a buyer to put the infrastructure in it. They're not going to, the deal wasn't that they would put the infrastructure in.
Well, just to remind you, I have to be comfortable, and the best the board does, that what we are stipulating in these decisions is something that we're comfortable with.
I don't mind reiterating it with some sort of a covenant in which they make these promises, but they've got to be able to sell the lot because they're not in the excavation business or the construction business or the asphalt business or the stone wall business or any of that other stuff. Whoever buys lot three takes on that responsibility.
But if we have a policy, a process that we've followed for fifteen years, it's important that there is a consistency.
And a lot of times the owners of the property that it's subdivided, many times, are also, also live on the property and are subdividing and selling off lots on the property. So this isn't a unique case.
But in that case, they're building a road.
No, not necessarily. We're talking about two or three lot subdivisions.
Well, this is a two lot driveway. One of the houses probably won't be built.
So I have a question. Why couldn't you post, if you're anticipating that lot two is not going to be sold for a while and lot three is the person that's going to be putting in the roadway?
Yep.
Why couldn't you post lot two as a, put a covenant on lot two and hold that as a surety?
That, what would the covenant say? That it wouldn't be conveyed until the infrastructure was installed for the common driveway?
It would comply with-
Form D. No building permit, no conveyance.
Form D and the language, which basically says, "By covenant agreement executed and duly recorded by the owner of the market and running with the land, provided that the ways and services shall be constructed to serve any lot before the lot may be built upon or conveyed," other than by a deed pointage. Which is the town's regulation.
We can talk, but it doesn't sound like a problem because there's no intent to immediately mark it lot two. So if you want a whole lot two hostage, no building permit or no conveyance until the infrastructure is installed by the owner of lot three with satisfaction of the board's inspectors' date, then I think that works.
Are you okay, are you really okay with having lot three be responsible for the driveway?
Well, okay, so-
Well, that's their choice.
So-
No, it isn't. It's our stipulation.
Here's what I would then think I would do, is that if lot, the owner of lot three is going to be putting the work in, that the utilities in, then that person posts some form of surety because they're the ones that are doing the work and then two gets released.
I don't think you need surety from the guy on lot three when he's doing the work. You can't get a building permit. He either does the job or he doesn't.
All right, I'm not comfortable with that.
He's got to get site plan approved before he does bid to do the grubbing and clearing.
Let's stop that one right now. I'm not comfortable with the only requirement being a building permit on lot three.
Well, I get that. So you can hold lot two hostage and?
What was the matter with what you just said?
I didn't have a problem with it as it applied to lot two being held hostage.
No, 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 subsequently. But surety for lot three-
Surety for what?
To install a roadway.
For the construction of the roadway.
It is a roadway.
But the way the subdivision control law is designed to work is that you make a promise that you'll do the work and then you go out and do it. And then at some point you want to sell the lot and get a building permit. And you never do the hard, the top course, for example, until the construction trucks have come and gone. So that's when you have the surety. The first surety is the promise, the second surety is the cash equivalent of the work remaining to be done. If you're going to require this guy to do a surety for the full value of the driveway, that doesn't make sense.
Well, so maybe one of the options is there's some form of agreement between the planning board, the owner of lot three, and the property owners of lots one and two.
Yeah.
That when the construction starts, if it gets to a certain point, then lot two is released and-
No, but he doesn't care. Lot three's owner doesn't care if lot two is released.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is lot two's owner.
Okay, so lot two remains with the surety. And there's some form of agreement between the owner of lot three and the board and the owner of lots one and two.
Yeah, that makes sense, but there's-
Just because I'm confused because we're really, how does that actually preferable?
Yeah.
What is preferable?
Yeah, right.
What is preferable? That's what we're asking.
Well, I think in a-
This is not a negotiation. Either we accept these waivers or we don't.
If the property owners were the ones that were doing the work, you'd be happy with lot two as a surety, right? It's worth how many millions of dollars, the work that would actually be done?
So then the town, would they become the owner of lot two and we would-
No, no, no. Lot two-
That's what I'm asking.
Lot two would have a covenant on it saying that it can't be built upon or it couldn't be conveyed until the improvement is-
Let me ask you, why would you change a process that the planning board has gone through for fifteen years? Why would we change that in your opinion?
That's clearly something that's up to you. I am looking, I'm looking at-
We're looking for your recommendation. Why would we do it?
I guess from my perspective, and you're day five, it's a situation where this project has gone on for a number, for a while.
Our basic decision is whether we grant the waivers to make this project feasible or not. If we don't grant the waivers, the lot stays just as it is. Why, my question consistently has been, why are we doing this? If, you know, if-
As I understand it, you've got a twenty acre parcel, nineteen point whatever acres.
That requires-
You're dividing it up into three lots, three large lots. And to me, I guess I would see the benefit is that's preferable to divvying it up into more lots.
But they can't because they need the offset waiver and they need the dead end waiver. So if you take, that's why I brought, that's why I made this exposition in the first place, Betsy. You know, if we say we don't grant the offset waiver, then that's it. It freezes the lot. What we've been trying to do is work with these people to try to get them the, something that they can live with and something that we can live with.
And that's why we have six pages of design standards for lot two and lots three.
That's not the decision though. You hit your hand up.
Yeah, not the, God, I've been sitting here trying to think of examples. I just can't think of any, but, and not to cut you off with these, but in the past, I'm thinking of stuff down on like Highland that Matt did and stuff like that.
Matt Ganson?
Yeah, Matt Ganson, you know, and he is great. Oh, you know, my sisters, you didn't know that? After that, there was a decision, there was a general thought that, because he put in a lot of driveways to nowhere that stayed there to nowhere for a long time and water lines to nothing, you know, to get over this hump. After that, there was a general thought that we need to kind of figure out a way of not having to do that for flexible. So that, you know, so that when people needed to convey a lot, they didn't need to put in their driveway to nowhere and then it sat for another three or four years. Now, we've also had the flip side of that where we've said some stuff has to go in now, specifically like plantings and screenings, so that we get the, you know, three or four years of growth by the time it's conveyed. But, you know, so that was a, that was kind of a thought of like, you know, our side of the table, of a way of why not put, of not putting in the infrastructure so that you had it, that you had to convey the lot, had to put in the infrastructure so that you could convey the lot. They come up with some other mechanism. I can't, I've been ragging my brain. I know, I don't, I can't remember where we did the lot. But I know we've kind of like held off on putting in infrastructure until like site plan approval for the second lot on like a two lot or something, you know.
But in those scenarios, did the planning board endorse the plan and a surety be posted?
They didn't be sure to get placed.
We did do surety for the entire, I worked up, I remember working up amounts for the entire amount of the infrastructure.
Sunday Woods, that's who you're talking about. Because we released the first lot and then the last two, the money was held in bond for the other she built out of the building and everything.
Selling it.
Sunday Woods had a buyer right away. And didn't she put the road in?
It's a little different because-
She put the road in.
She wanted that surety gone back.
It's a little different because they, she did stop putting the road in right away. I'm talking about like a couple of years delay.
That was a two lot subdivision on Conover, I mean.
But there was a big difference between the time that the first lot was released and the last two because the infrastructure wasn't complete.
Right, but the timing, or the sequence is more conventional.
Yeah, starting.
The sequence is more conventional and I just can't think, and it's probably only was like, you know, very low risk type of things where it was, you know, like a, you know, a two lot flexible, which really was almost like an A and R, you know, we said don't put the driveway in.
I don't remember what else. I remember 201 Newton, which was three lots with two accesses. So it was essentially a two lot plus a one lot subdivision. And they had to put the utilities in that driveway to the first new lot.
Right.
Where was that?
201 Newton.
But on the second lot, there was no utilities?
Well, after you got to the fourth, but the utilities ran up to the fourth.
I think Dave raises a good point. I mean, if we build the driveway at least to the boundary of lot two and then lot three doesn't sell, yish.
Lot three will sell.
Well, you've got a driveway to nowhere until it does. And if the market turns down, it's already a driveway.
I mean, it's, you know, it's more along the lines of like, I think Matt Ganson's driveway off of Highland was, you know, five years and people asking us, what is that? Do you remember that one?
Yeah, but we still had a surety for that one.
Yeah, but I mean, that, I think spurred this discussion on the flexible of like-
But I can't, honestly, the typical default is we get that in there because it's that way we can control it. We know, we know what the standards are, we know, we know, we know who we're dealing with, which is the person selling the land, and so we can, we can, we can manage that process. In this case, it's somebody that we don't know at some time that we can't predict, that we, that we think is going to, you know, have to live by the standards that we put down, but we can't be sure. So, I mean, there's so many ifs that it gets to be a Rube Goldberg contraption. And then, and then on top of it, you're not even asking anybody to post any surety. I mean, you're holding one lot hostage. I mean, and then, and then you hang everything on the building permit.
But what's the risk?
Risk is it doesn't get built right.
Well, the guy's going to spend millions of dollars for lot three and then he's going to be coming in for site plan approval to grub and clear, to lay out the roadway, all of which is going to be field inspected. He's going to have to install it to spec. He's going to have to dry stub lot two, all of which is subject to field inspection. And then and only then he can get a building permit. And what's the risk?
Well, whether it's is that he gets partway there and whatever happens in his personal finances, he can't go any farther and he can have a construction site that doesn't go anywhere.
The same risk applies to them.
No, but we're issuing a set of conditions on a site that we want to be sure in the, in the last analysis reflects what it is that we're conditioning the site for. So I'm really worried about the hanging everything on the building permit. That really bothers me a lot. And nothing, because, I look, I've been an architect for forty-four years. I've built hundreds of buildings. I know, I know the construction process. This worries me, okay? I know the-
I've been a lawyer for thirty years. Equitable relief is equitable relief. This doesn't worry me.
Well, well, then luckily you're not voting on this, are you?
I guess so.
You know, if you want to get tough, I can, I, believe me, I can get, I can be just as tough as you can.
Well, we've come this far. This is a long way to have come with this to pop up here tonight.
It's not popping up. You brought it up. This is our, these are our standard conditions. You know, this-
We've raised this concern-
For several months now.
During our meetings in the past, we have raised this concern. Perhaps the best way to deal with this is for me to get your permission to talk to Joel and for Joel to weigh in to give you some comfort.
You're not going to change my mind on hanging this on the building permit.
It's a legal question, Al, then why not ask Joel to weigh in?
Because I'm not comfortable with that single condition personally.
So the answer is to force them to the excavator?
You have Joel's K and P.
Is Joel's K and P?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a K and P.
Okay.
I mean, right now I'm looking at a situation in which they're next going to have to let their shovels out and go to work, which was not something that they found to play. It needed me to stay that they found to play that.
Well, they don't have to.
I get it, but that's-
I mean, they don't actually have to.
I mean, you have three years from the decision, right? Do not stop work.
Special permit's two.
Two. Someone who can agree to buy lot three and install the driveway and doors.
One possibility, if there's not a buyer for lot three and by a date certain, they put, they put in a driveway.
Someone did that. Again, yeah, that would be an example, you know, tell, not helpful.
And what if after all this, lot two ends up selling first, do you come back and amend the special permit?
Yeah, because it's not going to happen. So let's just deal with the reality, lot three's selling first.
Right, okay, so it's not going to happen, so what if there is some sort of a legal or covenant or whatever not to sell lot two until lot three?
I can live with that, I think we can too. But I can live with that and I think my clients can as well.
So it's, you know, you want to put up-
I didn't get an answer to the question. The question was, what about a date certain for the sale of lot three and after which point the subdivision has to put in the roadway?
I'll talk with my clients about it. Isn't anything that we've heard before. What would you envision the date being?
A year. Or nothing. How's that?
With all due respect, Al, we've been here for two years.
So have we. We've been trying to help you for two years, Ann. We have, we've, we've worked with you.
We've worked on the documents.
How many meetings have we had with you? With you and with Mark?
I, can I finish please? So we have drafted the documents that you've instructed us to draft, beginning with Tom Moore, who you brought on board at our expense to work this out with Kim, thanks, and Dave, the size of the roadway, the size of the driveway. We're talking, we have two houses on the lot currently. I appreciate your point of view with regard to the waivers that are needed. I'm hearing you, but we've spent two years answering your concerns. We have drafted all the documents, made all the amendments, hired all the individuals that you directed us to hire. We've had Marcus on site to draw for you.
Maybe we made a mistake by not, by not just dismissing it right off the bat. But you're right, maybe we should have just said no right off the bat and been done with everything immediately. Maybe that would have been better.
Well, we can, we'll talk about coming up with a time, outside time when it's a sell lot two. But what's your idea, that after the time limit expires, they have to build the driveway?
Yeah.
Just because I'm curious, how does that address your concern for the first year?
Well, because-
You supposedly find a buyer for lot three in the first year.
Well, then we'll work with the, with the covenant that Betsy was suggesting or some sort of surety, for performance surety, to make sure that whoever installs it installs it properly.
Can I just say, and I'm probably speaking out of term because I don't know, but one year seems hard to market that lot. And if this would expire in two years anyhow, this special permit, correct?
Correct.
Offhand, I would just say two years. But once again, you know, I'm, this is hard for me to really get because this is history that the planning board has always done for years. This is the way they handle their special permits. And I don't really know the entire background, but I'm sure that these rules weren't made out of thin air, that somebody got burned and it was probably the town. And that's why this rule has been holding for all these years. So you have to kind of understand the position of the board. It's very hard for us to just say, oh, sure, we'll just change this for you. So you have to kind of understand the position of the board. It's very hard for us to just say, oh sure, we'll just change this for you all, you know, and, and then.
Then it changes forever.
And then it does change forever. And then we get a lot of other people who maybe are quite as honorable and scrupulous as you guys are and, and we'll just get, it'll be a big mistake. And we'll all sit here and sit there and say, wow, what were we thinking of? Because we've had that moment in the past, not to do with you at all, but we've had that moment in the past. We're like, wow.
It's very important to be that consistency, especially, I mean, and we have, you know, it may be politically expedient or favorable to somebody to do it differently, but then that becomes an somewhat arbitrary, somewhat deprecious kind of decision. And that's not where we want the board to be.
And I'm completely sympathetic to, to you guys. I mean, I understand what you're, you have really done everything we've asked. But I'd hate to have this all come to a big crashing end now after all the effort that's been expended and all these people's parts because of this. And it's gotta be some way we can work around this, which we're not changing our. As Al said, like market, I'm sorry.
If we say that lot two cannot be sold, the covenant in place until or after lot three is sold could be the same transaction. And if we say that lot two can't get a building permit until the infrastructure, it can't be sold, you can hold it hostage, that's what I'm trying to say. Then is it that consistent with the covenant that you have, right? You're holding a three million dollar lot hostage.
It would be set up just like you do normally with a lot being held. And that's certainly gotta be worth more, much dramatically more than the improvements.
We would give you the promise in the covenant.
Are you hoping with the lot, with lot three being responsible to install the road?
It's not ideal.
What is ideal?
Ideal is, ideal is to have the, the property owner, um.
Why aren't we, why aren't we insisting on ideal?
Let me ask a question. Because if, if you really want the property owner to do this, is the issue from your point of view that the property owner doesn't want to do it now or doesn't want to do it ever? And I'm asking that question because. Right. Because I'm asking that question because if, if it's stipulated that the property owner didn't need to do it until lot three was sold, but then it was the property owner's responsibility to put the road in once it was sold.
That's a thought.
But you're gonna be dealing with the owner of lot three for site plan review for the house. There are design standards in place, but they still have to come back and put all of that work, all of that. That's the heavy lifting there.
No, but what about that? That's not a bad idea. Then, then, then basically, um, the money for the roadway gets paid for anyway by the guy that buys lot three. What's the matter with that?
You've already done most of the engineering and design for the road. Haven't you?
You guys might walk and talk to me.
Haven't you already done most of the design anyway? You have a civil engineering board.
Good job. We have control. I mean, this is a, this is a deal with. Do all this with the site area.
So, so the infrastructure.
That was the owner, property owner.
So was the owner of that?
Yeah. But, but one, one was the same.
One lot was able to so many reports that there.
The owner of lot, so they paid, they paid for the infrastructure, they sold it, it was sixty thousand.
They were like the original owner and.
It's something, yeah, the developer. It was a developer, a body, a piece of property, a house.
I can sell the house.
It was a house, that, that one, the bootstrapped, the project. Which is exactly what you.
The owner of a new lot does the, does the, it's weird because the, the property owner is supposed to, somebody else is doing it.
Yeah, where are you in Charleston?
It's not like there's, it's not like it's the Appalachian.
Oh, you're staying in Charleston.
Yeah, where's that, where's that site? Could we have the Loring Road section? Um, there was a less, it's additional. It's the, it's the Loring replacement. Yeah, this is what we. It was about ten years ago. Originally, this was gonna be retained. And they changed it so it's a retaining wall.
Which is what the original proposed.
They proposed, this was gonna be retained originally.
Yeah, but originally, originally they proposed this, then they came, after they proposed it, they came to us.
First it was all strange. It was totally literature.
Right, and then they came, finally, they said, we make this the retaining wall rather than putting it back here.
Well, right now they built it.
Right, so they went back to.
And is that, is that, have we signed off on that change? We did, because none of us can.
So it's downtown.
See, it never came back to us.
No, we were all up there.
We were worse.
Who were we? Not me.
I think so.
See, this is the way it was supposed to be, Joel. Really, it was supposed to be like this. Well, you were. You never did a site.
I never went on a site. We, we could probably go back to. This was okay on the site.
We never, we never.
Yeah. Are you saying there was a second site more there?
Very construction.
But he's right enough. We could ask, you know, if we wouldn't pull down?
Yeah.
But let's come back to.
The boys.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we would not, no. Because we, because we, we didn't take the first, you know, we didn't take the first hand help us on this.
Do you know when that was?
None of us remember. It was cold, so not.
This was taken the winter before.
No, it was definitely in the winter. It was in the fall that the whole thing was approved.
We noticed this change in January.
Yeah, I remember it too. Wasn't that longer?
This change?
Let's ask, let's ask, let's ask Jay.
Yeah, why don't you ask Jay? Because none of us can remember this at all. So that was the question.
That's the question.
Because I get a big talk to about it because it was one of these. Yeah, they should have. I mean, it looks like. Because that's exactly what they said they wouldn't do. I don't think they knew that.
Anyway, so that's it. Nice.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. What do you say?
Yeah, let's just make this.
So I think, give us two years. The permit lapses in two years anyway.
That's fine.
Right, so we'll put the place on, sell is closed, as far as I'm concerned.
So the condition is that when the lot sells, if it sells anytime within the next two years, that then the subdivisions will build a driveway. Okay.
And the utilities?
And, and the surety is, is, is still lot two. Are you okay with that?
Are you okay? Have you read it yet?
I'm, I'm, I'm worried about the surety issue. I'm still worried about that, but you think that's all right?
Arden Swills, can you explain what the surety of lot two means exactly?
Arden, if I understand it correctly.
Go in, I'm sorry.
This is Arden Willis.
Arden Swills.
What they're proposing is that hold lot two hostage.
Which is behind our barn, right?
Yes, that's the one in the meadow.
Exactly.
Up the meadow. Hold that hostage, don't sell that. Use that as a guarantee that they will build the access roadway from Concord Roads up to the lot three building envelope in accordance with our conditions in their drawings. And, and so that gives us.
And if they don't follow those conditions, then what happens to lot two?
Well, that's a question. That's one of the reasons why I'm worried about this. Usually we, we require actual surety so that the town can come in and do the work if it's not acceptable. And, and that's one of the reasons why I'm, I've been a little dicey about. It's usually a bond escrow. Yeah, it's usually escrow. Why, why would lot two act as escrow to guarantee that the work would be done? What if it's not done in accordance with what we think it should be? We have to, the town has to move in and do the work. That's the purpose of a surety.
Does the lot then invade to the town?
The town would never move in and do the work.
Well, it is the work.
No, there's no, there's no drainage facility that you'd have to build after the houses are occupied. There's no.
No, 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 we're talking about the roadway.
Right.
Why would that happen?
One thing, why would it happen? It hap, it happens.
Well, if you can't get a building permit unless you build it right, meaning Dave says it's okay. So why would the town have to finish it? Because it's on private property.
Now, sometimes, we've had cases where we've done work on lots and then just disappeared into the sunset.
I've chased bonds because there's four hundred thousand dollars worth of work to finish on the roadway and the construction with an eighty thousand dollar bond.
We usually put the, the security in the escrow. And then we can, we can come at the escrow if we have to. And, and what.
But generally, I mean, from my experience, what happens is they post the lots as security first and then they get down the way, a certain, they get to a certain point on the roadway improvements and then they switch over to a bond or a bank, bank pass or a tripartite agreement, all of which are allowed per master of law in your subdivision right.
I assume it does a hundred percent.
So what, what? What do you recommend? What happens if it doesn't get built right?
If it doesn't get built right, Dave's gonna be out there looking at it. And if it doesn't get, if it starts to go astray somewhere, he's gonna give us a heads up. And then we're gonna say to them, you're not building it right.
And what if they don't do it? We're gonna, security's gonna say two things to us. Number one, we won't give you a building permit for lot three until you fix the problem. And number two, we won't ever let you sell lot two or have a building permit for it either. And so fix it up.
How often have you run into the problem where somebody hasn't built anything?
A couple times, actually.
And how have you resolved it?
Well, it depends. Um, I'm not sure the town ever actually had to move in and, and do, and take over the work, although we have all the escrow.
Well, I, I think holding lot two and surety is good. If we need, and I think we still may need an escrow, that should come from the buyer of lot three.
Well, but let me.
Because they're the ones, they're the ones that will be on the.
What, no, because.
They're the ones that are on the hook for performance.
No, David, we just, we just made the, the, the property, we just made the subdivision responsible for the, for the roadway installation.
Don't confuse surety and security. They're two different things. So the subdivision control law gives you four possible security measures, a covenant, which everybody chooses because it's great. Then at some point, eighty percent of the work, you convert the remaining work into cash, negotiable securities or a tripartite agreement because you want a building permit and you want to be able to convey. That's the whole point of this. So you switch one security out for the other. So play it out here. You're gonna put them on the hook. Let's put the cost of the driveway from the Concord Road intersection to the front door of lot three's house at five hundred thousand bucks. There's no point in getting five hundred thousand dollars worth of surety from them because they're gonna go out and they're actually gonna start doing the work. They're gonna be spending down on that five hundred thousand dollar obligation that they have in doing the work. At some point, they're gonna wanna get a building permit for lot three and that's probably when they've already put four hundred just for hypotheticals into the road. So now at that point, you say to them, okay, well, we eyeball this as having a hundred thousand left. Dave verifies that with a field inspection. We want you to, they're gonna say, we want you to release the covenant so that we can now get the building permit. And you choose one of the other three types. It's either a tripartite agreement with a bank, it's negotiable securities and deposit, or it's a bond. And now everybody's whole and you know that if it's not finished, you can go out there and finish the work. But in this case, it's not a road that's gonna enter the cul-de-sac. This is a driveway to a garage door. So I don't know why you care that it gets finished. I would think you'd care more about whether it gets finished.
Actually, there are certainly areas in that driveway that worry me a lot. Because it's, it's going over sort of the front yard and through, through part of the house that's there now, that cape. So it's not, it's not that, it hasn't actually, it's been designed up to a certain point. It hasn't been designed completely. So it, it, it worries me, you know, that, that we don't have every, um, stipulation on that, on that roadway yet.
Well, I also think we have to think just collectively about what it is they're promising to do because they're gonna build the driveway. And there's a house builder waiting in the wings that's been hired by the buyer of lot three. So at what point are we gonna say they're done? Is it when the base course is down? Because that guy's gonna be driving really heavy equipment up a finished driveway? That doesn't make any sense. So maybe what they do is they build it to base course.
You build a base course.
Okay, they build a base course. And is it going to the boundary of lot two or the, where the driveway turns into lot two? Or is it going all the way to the garage door in lot three? Your, your choice, but we need to say what it is.
It's gotta go to the garage door in lot three.
Fine, so a base course to the garage door is the standard.
And all the utilities.
Yeah.
But, but there's so much, that, that, that seems conceptually very simple, but it's, this is not. It's simple up to lot two and then it gets to be complicated. It's more complicated construction.
Because we know where it's going.
You mean just in terms of the pogo.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and we also know exactly where it's going to the edge of lot two, but after that, we don't know exactly where it's going.
Well, he's got a box, right?
Right, but the house has to be designed.
So it has, there's a performance standard that we have to sign off on. It's not just a matter of, you know, oh, well, he met all the state, all the regulations. Uh, what are, what are you holding him up for? That's what.
It's all in the six pictures. But I think conceptually what Steve's proposing is something that we can remove. Make the same promise on lot two that we.
Oh yeah, we're there. We got past that one. Now we, now we're stuck on this, on the surety.
Well, I think it's like they said, right? You're gonna hold them to put four hundred thousand dollars worth of work into the ground and then they're gonna come back and ask for a different form.
It sounded reasonable to me, the scenario. I have one question. Doesn't one of those houses have to come down?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and at what point, so that is included in the driveway under construction?
Yeah. The demolition. It goes right through the house.
Because I thought that.
It's in there.
So, so yeah. So it really does get expensive.
But, yeah, but it's, 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 it's unknown. It's terrifying, it's a bit over that last. Maybe six hundred feet.
Which one? Special header.
This ledge there?
It doesn't just like.
No.
It's a double.
When is that house to be demolished?
Prior to the issue to the building permit for lot three.
That would have to be demolished before the, before the roadway came in. I don't know if that's.
Oh, here it is. No building permit shall be issued for lot three until the existing house on Concord Road is been razed and cleaned up.
Actually, that, that one.
Yeah, page seven and four.
That would, you'd actually, you should have said that demolition has to occur before the roadway's built. Because the.
It's not too late. Not too late.
Driveways.
Yeah.
Well, no, the, the, the new driveway goes right through the house. So we just said, the driveway, the driveway gets built from Concord Road to the garage door.
Mm-hmm.
So that means that, that the house has to come down before the driveway gets built.
Until the existing house at One Concord Road has been razed, cleaned up, completed, and the road to the garage.
The common roadway.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there needs to be some consistency.
Susan's calling it a roadway. I don't know why she picked that, but that's what she's calling it.
Who is?
Susan.
It is, because it is a, it's a subdivision road.
Yeah, I call it a driveway, she called it a.
It needs to be some consistency between the documents on that.
Yeah.
So I would call it roadway, yeah, roadway.
Yeah, I would too. So you're okay with surety being lot two?
I am.
It's, it, you're not, you're not qualifying by, by saying it's not ideal. You, you think this is, this is.
They have the options of various sureties, and.
Who has the options? Well, aren't we putting it in our decision what the surety is?
Um, you can, you can, um, this is four, but, yes, this is four. There's four options.
We'll, we'll start with the, with the promise that we've made, and then we'll, at some point, come to you and propose to switch it to one of the other three, which is a bond, money, and escrow. Nobody does that anymore, or tripartite.
Sure, sure they do.
Okay.
We did that ever since I was.
Elsewhere, you don't want it anymore.
I don't know, I don't care about elsewhere.
I mean, you're holding a lot that's worth, how much? Couple million?
Yep, two to three.
But you're not going to, you're not going to seize the lot. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's, that's not going to happen.
I will fly.
That's what we're buying here.
Uh, no. The town would not seize that lot, I guarantee you.
No, man, I don't.
It's, it's just, it's, it's a, you know, it's a Band-Aid. Um, we, we need some, we need something that you can actually take to the bank, so that's, what, what do you think? But how, the, how's not going to buy the lot?
Buy the lot? No, no, they wouldn't buy the lot, but suppose the lot was. But what David is saying, they would not seize the lot if the work was not done in accordance with.
Well, seize it and sell it. They won't do it.
No, we're not talking about seizure and sale. We're talking about unbuildable forever until we get it right.
Right.
And it's our fault if we don't, so you're not in jeopardy of that. We won't get it right.
Right. So I mean, they're putting a covenant on lot two. So lot two, basically, they're putting something on file at the registry saying that this, you know, is, is held as security. And what will happen is, down the pike, the planning board would issue, when the, when there's a new security, a surety being posted, like a bank passbook or a tripartite, then you release that lot for sale. And then something gets posted at the registry saying the lot is released for sale. If that, if something happens that doesn't work out right, you've, you're not going to release that lot.
We're, they will look at that.
So they're not going to be able to do anything until they make it right. And you're holding that lot, and the, the ability to hold off on releasing it is secured.
I'm not too much funnier to keep it on.
Makes sense to me.
So I don't know that, I don't know that Sue is still involved, or that you want her to be involved, but I don't have any comments from her. Betsy was kind enough to get her to comment on the definitive plan. Does it make sense that she makes some comments on the special permit side of this, and that?
Yeah, I, I think it does. Um, what do you, Roy, what do, you haven't said a thing. What do you think about the, the surety question?
I'm a little unclear about the whole notion of surety. Surety is intended to make sure that we have some teeth in the event that this promise doesn't happen, specifically with regard to the roadway. Is that true?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And your point is, it's impossible to cash out something in that form. The only thing is, it's, it's a potential, a lot of money on the other side that, that's.
But with, with the lot, see, that's not the money. With the, the, the theory of, of holding the lot by covenant is that we're strangling their ability to capitalize on the lot. And so we're using that as a cudgel to make them do the work.
Right.
The, the alternative, which is the, the escrow, is that if you, if, if you finally get to the point where you say enough is enough, you just go to the escrow and you build a damn driveway yourself. But with a, with a covenant thing, what worries me, Betsy, is the only, now you're, now it's, the only thing you have is that cudgel. You know, so it's, 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 it's just automatically adversarial, you know? I could just see endless amounts of wrangling and fighting over what's right and what's wrong, and why are we beating up on the poor people? They can't sell their lot. You know, I, I just see that scenario spinning out. That's, that's why I'm.
So the board doesn't normally hold a lot as sure as security?
Escrow, every time.
Nobody.
Really?
In, in any other town I've ever been in, ever bonds or tripartite agreements, the entire cost of the infrastructure, as if it's virgin ground today, and the ultimate build out will cost five, nobody does a $5 million tripartite agreement. You do 80% of the work under the covenant, you come back, and now you bond the remaining 1 million of it. That's.
So now I hope they're understanding why you're concerned, because I've always been in a situation where the lots are held as security first.
No, we always do it by escrow. We have for 15 years.
And so the form of security is the developer's, the statute says.
On the other hand, it, it is practice in other towns in the state. It isn't practice in our town necessarily, but it is obviously acceptable to other municipalities, and.
Other municipalities don't have planning boards that meet until 1:30 at night.
Yeah.
It's a very bad time to make decisions.
But, and, and the point is, it's not unknown. We're not inventing this ourselves here tonight. Um, if, if we're really questioning it, we can certainly run it by Joel, he's probably going to tell us exactly what, Betsy.
He'll tell us what the standard, what the standard procedure is.
For the state. I mean, your, your subdivision regs point it right out. They say, provision of performance guaranteed before endorsing an approved definitive subdivision plan. The planning board shall require the subdivider, by with the planning board, performance guarantees to secure the construction of the ways and installation, municipal services, the following section outlines a non-performance guarantees permitted under Mass General Law 41, Section 81U. The guarantees are two kinds, a covenant and sureties. While the method may be selected and varied from time to time by the subdivider or successor in interest, the planning board prefers to use, prefers the use of an agreement covenant and may submit other forms of performance guarantee to town council for review to inform in a manner of execution. Planning board will not accept any bond or surety that has a fixed expiration date, letters of credit, and negotiable securities that are unacceptable. Um, listed below are the methods which the installation ways can be, and municipal services can be secured, which are allowed and specified under Mass General Law 4181U. First one is a covenant agreement executed and duly recorded by the owner of record and running with the land. The second one is by deposit of money or, or proper bond, and, and, well, that's two. And then the third is the tripartite agreement.
Right, and we always go for the number two.
We always have.
Always have.
But our own bylaws.
Yeah, I know, it gives, gives us latitude.
Gives us a little.
Well, it gives us, let's be precise, the statute and your own regs, where you mimic statutes, give a choice of security to the developers. I know a lot of towns, and I've been, in a lot of them, would like to have a different form of bonds, or a different form of surety going forward, because some work better than others, but the choices the developers place down. All right, this is, what we're proposing here is nothing unusual like in another town, but if it's 500,000 bucks and they've got their shovels ready, why would you ask them for 500 bucks? It's 500 dollars of security, and the minute they start working it, they're whittling away at that 500. And it's all being inspected on a regular schedule by your field inspection crew. But it ends at 8:00.
Here's.
Take a vote.
I don't think we can take a vote. Just a side vote, too. What, what do you guys think? Does it matter to you?
To me?
Well, I just don't have the experience, and having done other subdivisions.
We made a suggestion which I think made sense, at least to me, it seemed to be acceptable there. Unless it's not acceptable with someone here, you know.
We're talking about something else.
No, we're not even talking about that anymore.
It's totally acceptable, not a covenant.
Yeah.
So we would give you a covenant.
Which is completely spelled out in our own regulations, it hasn't been chosen up as.
No, we've always gone for sure.
But.
For escrow, always.
It is there.
Escrow's number two.
Yeah.
And the alternative for number three, which is a tripartite. And what's the first one?
A covenant.
It's a covenant.
We don't have any problems giving you the, the other four, and we just want to start with the covenant. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, you're sure double dipping. We're going to spend 400,000 bucks to do the work and give you a $500,000 surety.
That sounds good.
That's double dipping.
So I, I'm, I. That's what you did on something once. Because it doesn't seem like it's that. It's in our files, that that is unacceptable, nothing.
It's a tripartite agreement.
That's the bank, you, and the developer, and it says that if the developer screws up, you can go directly to the bank and get the money to fix the problem. Sometimes the banks block, and you've got to go right to your bank, but it works.
So Betsy, what, what do you recommend? You recommend the covenant?
It's, it's standard on what other projects I've been involved in.
So that's a yes.
Yes.
So it's a recommendation?
It's a recommendation.
Okay. I'll leave with a recommendation of the planning.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I work with Betsy and Susan to craft something that reflects what we've talked about tonight? And then I think the next step would be to have Susan look at the special permit.
Mark, we have a planner now, so.
I'm just trying not to step on Susan's toes, because I know she was involved in this.
No, but I mean, no, I'd rather have Betsy and Susan do it, and then you can, you can take a look at it and make, and make whatever changes you'd like.
That is fine.
We, the paradigm's changed, because we now have a planner in place.
I, I have a concern, which is nearly anything like what we've been talking about, but there have been so many iterations of these agreements, and like, I just looked at the special permit, and it doesn't include any of the changes that I made in my last email to you, so.
You know what? Why don't I just collect them all, and I'll redraft, and talk it over with Susan, and we'll come up with.
Okay, so it's based on your.
The final, oh my god.
The final file?
So this is different from what I.
I think that includes you too. Okay. Yes, everybody has it. I'll, I'll send it again.
Send it to her.
I go.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to actually, hopefully, read the final, this final, final decisions when.